Okay, welcome to February 5th. Special meeting. For starting, gentlemen and ladies, you can hear my office field. Welcome to the February 5th, 2015 special meeting for the budget workshop. Roll call.
Chairman Patanoster.
Here.
Vice Chair Nafrio. Secretary of Work. Philip Downmire.
Here.
David McMahon.
Here.
Deborah Purnier.
Here.
Diane von Baer.
Here.
Come to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, budget workshop.
Okay, left a couple, three things actually to seats. One of them, I was going to go over briefly, and that's the self-insurance presentation for healthcare. The other is an updated capital request. And what I did with that is I filled in a couple more numbers based on just some, you know, counting rooms and some raw estimates. So we'll get to that. And then also, Lou had asked a question about the athletic budget at the high school. There's actually a corrected sheet on there because one of the things I had receipts. We originally had the girls hockey and equipment. I moved it over to fees in the summary sheet, but I didn't do that in the detail sheet that I had given you. That's why I was having to, I couldn't understand why I couldn't match up to the numbers Lou was asking me about. In any event, the increase in fees really is essentially all due to girls hockey. There's a $7,500 budget, which is a budget of $12.50 for six students. And that basically drove the entire increase in that category. You can see the total increase in dues and fees is $78.45 and $7,500 is girls hockey. The other thing is the police. And I had a couple of conversations with Todd about this, and they're really, this comes in really two areas. For football and for ice hockey, what they've done is they've actually adjusted the number to, a four-hour shift for a police officer costs approximately $300. So they've gone back and they've basically sharpened their pencil on those two sports and found we were actually under budget in the current year. And so they increased those two. Then the other thing they did for boys soccer, girls soccer, and field hockey is the attendance has been up recently, and there's four night games on the schedule, or they're anticipating four night games on the schedule for each of those sports. So the anticipation is that they will need an officer for each of those games. So that's where that comes from.
So currently, any home games for boys soccer, girls soccer? I feel like we haven't had anybody. But based on the demand of people coming to the sport, he feels that officers justify...
We did have some money in the budget before, but I think they were, you know, they might have been deciding which games to have officers at. And I think now with the attendance being up, they just felt that for the night games, it's appropriate to have an officer there.
Ultimately, that's the police chief's decision, right? With conversation with Mr. Stepwell, I'm sure, but ultimately, that is his, I know in my district it is, so I'm just asking. Is that way here?
In every town, they have people, they determine whether you need a police presence or not.
So basically, the Chief Pedali has recommended to us to follow through on this thing?
That I can't tell you. As I said, you know, I...
I'm just trying to get a handle. I went through the numbers with Todd. I don't think that the high school contacts the chief and says we have a, I think he looks at the schedule to determine who the opposition is, if it's a library event, says, you know, we should pick one out and request an officer.
So basically, then we have somebody at every home sport now. I mean, well, I mean, soccer.
And then actually, more than one in ice hockey.
Okay.
Which is a, that's a combination of a rank requirement, a police department, right?
No, good explanation, thank you. You answered my question.
Very nice.
Okay, if I, if I could...
Who would go back to, I just want to start with you, you and I had a little discussion for the hockey, just go back to the hockey, just $7,500. You and I both, you and I, girls hockey, girls hockey. That number can fluctuate based on the number of players that we have, correct, right? So I think you said it was going $12.50 per player.
Per player, correct.
So we got the four players hypothetically, we value that, well, we give out, and it would go up to $12.50. So it's $12.50 per player.
Now, I don't know whether, I don't know if there's a maximum, guessing there's a maximum we could go to because it's a combination team.
Right.
And so I would think that, you know, we're probably not going to go to 10 because I doubt whether they would take 10 players.
Right, but just for sake of conversation, my easy, my easy numbers.
Right.
It's really dependent upon Branford as a whole school with their number. If East Haven has girls that want to play, those North Branford, they may have room for extra players, they would then open it up to us, but it probably would decide.
Now, just out of curiosity, I just thought about this when I was saying, how many, how many hockey players will we have on hockey, the boys hockey, if we want to?
They're all different. The roster can carry 22.
Okay.
But there are always, I know in the district where I work, and even here in North Branford, there are kids who may not be on the varsity so-called team or the starting lines, and they don't dress, but they are still part of the team.
Now, I just figured, we're paying $52,000 for roughly, say, 20s, boys.
That's ice rental, though, doesn't matter if they...
You know, I'm saying, we're, we're...
Fifty kids on the ice are 25.
No, I'm saying, we divide it by 20 players, say, we're paying over $2,000 per boy.
Oh, compared to...
That's what I'm trying to, trying to show, that our expenditure for our North Branford boys hockey exceeds what we would invest in the girls hockey.
Correct.
That's all I'm trying to do.
And to answer, but then there is a maximum number, it's like 28 or something, I don't know exactly.
Okay.
We're not quite there. I think we're at approximately 22, and we're adding another student to that roster.
Right, but still, it's going to go between $100,000 compared to $12.50 at Williston and the girls. Okay, thanks, Tom.
Another question I had, again, a waste of time, you're not picking on them, did the rent go up from 25 and 28 before? Wasn't last year, it was 25?
I'm sure, we did go up based on fuel cost to run the amount, I remember that is it.
And electricity probably, because that's not long for electric, though, there, is it?
Uh, yeah, it should be.
Actually, no, it's...
No, it's not.
78 for both times.
Oh, yes, okay. Okay, for some reason.
But I mean, there is a cost, it's not, I mean, ice is ice, but the cost is...
I was wondering, is that, if you guys negotiate it all, or is it...
Um, that's a private, I doubt it.
I don't think he's looking to take any deals. He's got a number of, he's got a demand. We are fortunate, it was interesting, last night we played a game, and the game didn't end until after 10 o'clock based upon availability, ice hockey, the other team had a 45-minute ride back home where we have that rink in our backyard. And not only can we play our home, obviously, games there, but our league, North Bailey, Madison, Branford, also play there, so we play 70% of our games on our ice.
In our home rink, yeah.
Yeah, which is huge.
One other thing I did is I mentioned that I had access to some sub-data. Unfortunately, most of the data is not from surrounding communities, but of the data that I have, we're at 65. The next lowest is Southington at 70. And then there's a number of 75s, 80s, 90s, and, well, that's hard for, so I'll count that one. And, but they, there are one or two at 100. So we are relatively low in terms of our per diem subsystem rate.
I'm just curious, are those districts that require lots of subs on a daily basis? Or, you don't have to tell me what the districts are, I mean, is it just larger districts that would require...
Some, I mean, there's, like, but Plainville is 85. A lot of these are larger districts. Southington is 70, and they already said that. East Hampton is 75.
I'd have to rehash it, but I don't think it goes at the last one. So could you maybe explain what you just were talking about, where we're trying to talk about subs and what we're currently paying and...
We had originally contemplated requesting another $35,000 to increase our sub rate from 65 to 70. In terms of the administrative priorities, we decided to hold back on that, but it was on the list of, you know, things that we hadn't asked for. That, along with instructional coaches for social studies and science. But so there was some question in terms of where we are with the sub rate. And the comment was made, and, you know, it's certainly a good argument, that, you know, do we want to kind of, you know, do $5 and $5 and $5, or do we want to make a larger adjustment one time and, you know, just bite it off? So those are, you know...
And that was my, that was what made me be honest with you, because at 65, we're on the low end, and I told Don, well, if we're 70, we're still on the low end. Personally, I'd rather just bite the bullet and be in the ballgames every year coming back for, you know, a nickel here, a nickel there.
I don't know, I guess it would depend on our experience in terms of have we encountered some problems or...
Well, that was the discussion we had at the administrative level, that there are bad days, but the problem wasn't viewed as being so severe that, you know, it was the number one item on the list.
And then the requirements to be a substitute, to come into a building and substitute.
And we pay the minimum wage.
Minimum requirements.
We pay the minimum wage per hour.
Sounds actually a little lower.
Wait, what, nine, nine something, nine something hour, we require a V S.
I have a question, do we track the sub data? Like, do we know how many subs are in the district on a given day, and is that...
We, that data is available, yes.
And have we explored other options in terms of subs, like interns or anything like that?
We do use interns. We're actually having some difficulty now getting interns.
I remember, yes, yeah, I do recall.
And then we do have a number of permanent subs who we, we actually do pay them $5 a day more. The trade-off for them is, you know, it's not a great daily rate, but they're guaranteed work every day, so at least it's a consistent income. And so those are the two things mainly that we've done.
So are they, just because I'm not familiar, are they district-wide subs, or are they assigned to buildings, and are they the first subs used prior to calling in?
The permanent subs are assigned to a building, but if they're not needed at a building, then they would go to, for example, if TBS had one that wasn't needed, they would probably go to Jerome or NBIS, NBIS to the high school. And then the per diem subs are, we use ASOP subsystem.
Yeah.
And so they're all in there, they can classify themselves only for certain levels if that's what they choose to do, or they could, even if they haven't done that, they could only accept an assignment, let's say they only wanted to work at Chris's school, so they could say, okay, I'm only going to, I'm only going to accept this assignment at TBS even though they haven't flagged that. That means they would see others, but they, you know, obviously aren't any, under any obligation to accept them.
Do you use an agency, Meriden?
We use ASOP. We've employed, I think I might put it, we just put in something called TDP, Teacher Development Program. So we actually hired certified teachers who didn't get that first job.
Right.
And they're assigned to schools. We're a very large district, so when we talk about short subs, I'm sure, you guys have no clue, we're a very, very large district.
It's all the same time.
Yeah, exactly. We did a great job with the TDP. So these are certified teachers, it's a first year.
And there's incentives, they get an interview if there's no...
Yeah, they're guaranteed an interview, not a job, but this is a year-long job interview, and they have been outstanding. The downfall is, in particular, mine, just got hired somewhere.
Yeah, so they're out.
So they're out, but they already have a replacement.
Right.
So, and we didn't take every person who applied, we put them through an interview process, as somebody we would want to be in Meriden. So, but it does, reliability, they're never out. So we have UNH interns too, I've, you know, like, we have, but I will tell you, we find because of the low rate of pay, I'm not sure, I think we're in the six, I'm not sure.
I bet you it's 75, actually.
Really? So we, but they, they will drop the morning of, and we know that they're going to the technical school or someplace else where they're paying more. Yeah.
The test.
Yeah, so...
All right, I'll, I'll talk to Tom about that.
Yeah, we did a great job with that.
So that's all I have left over from last time, other than capital, but I was wondering if, if you want to take a minute to review the self-insurance. This is pretty similar to a presentation that was given at the town council meeting by our insurance consultant the other day. But basically, there are two, really, there's three components to the self-insurance program. There's going to be fixed costs, which are basically fees. For example, we, we would pay Anthem, and you see the number is $105,000 to manage our claims. There's a network access fee because we would still be using Anthem's network of $100,000, so theoretically, we benefit from some of the discounts. There's a couple other less significant fees. The other thing that happens, though, is Anthem would still look at our experience. And because what we would do is we would buy stop-loss insurance from Anthem. And this is really a key component of this, because it allows you to at least predict what your costs are going to be. So this is, this quote, and these numbers may change as, as we continue to go along, but this quote, you can see it's almost $600,000 for the individual stop-loss. That means anyone who has a claim that goes over $100,000, we stop paying for. And that would be any member, so it could be the employee or a dependent. The less expensive one, it's about $30,000, is the aggregate stop-loss, that's where we would look at $120,000 of the expected claims. So you come up with a total of about $860,000 in fixed costs. And if you turn to the next page, what happens is the, the variable costs, and again, this is determined by Anthem based on what they expect our claims to be. So if you look at this, they expect medical claims, and this for the entire town, not just the board, they expect medical claims of slightly over $4 million, drug of about $680,000, vision of $12,000. So the expected paid claims would be $4,715,000. You add that to the 860 from the previous slide, and you get an expected program cost of $5.575 million. Then when you go to the next page, these are the maximum costs. You take the expected paid claims, or the expected claims, the stop-loss, the aggregate stop-loss is going to cap that at 120%. So that's the 5.656. You add that to the fixed cost, and you get a maximum cost of 6.516. So there's almost a million-dollar swing between the expected claims and the maximum The next page is just a quick comparison to fully insured. The quote we got for fully insured was 6.563 million. Again, if you look at the expected, the 5.575, the savings is almost a million dollars. If you look at the maximum cost for the 6.516, the savings there is about $47,000. And one of the interesting things about this is the Affordable Care Act, we would be paying as part of our fully insured premium about $250,000 in tax. And we don't have to pay that if we self-insure. And so that's one of the things that recently has helped tip the scale in favor of self-insurance. Because we've looked at this before, and the numbers weren't as attractive, and one of the reasons the numbers weren't as attractive was because of that tax. So then on the last page, and this is the one that's, that's a little busy and it gets a little complicated, but basically, that million dollars between the expected claims and the max, or the expected cost and the maximum cost is what's often referred to as the risk corridor. Because if we get exactly the claims we expect, then we're only going to pay that expected claim cost. If we get, if we use the full 20% of the stop-loss insurance, then we're going to pay almost a million dollars more. So typically, what happens is, and this is where the decision has to be made, and obviously the council will be a driving force in this, is, and that, of course, assumes that self-insurance is a direction that, that everyone decides to go in, you have to fund some portion of that risk corridor. And so this last page compares, basically, is the increase we would see at various levels of risk. If we funded the entire risk corridor, we would have an increase over the current year of about 20.96%. If we funded 2/3 of it, we would have an increase in our medical premium of about 15%. If we fund 1/3 of it, it would be about 9.3%. And if we funded none of the risk corridor, then we would only have an increase of about 3.5%, although I've also been told that it's possible that the auditors would not look kindly on funding none of the risk corridors. I think frequently, it's funded over a two- or three-year period, and so that's where the 1/3, 2/3 comes in. So you can see, you know, we're looking at an increase in our medical premium of somewhere between 10 and 20%, depending on how much of the risk corridor gets funded in the first year. And that's obviously the thing that's of most concern to you, is the impact that it's going to have on our budget. So if we funded the full risk corridor, I mean, that's about what I have in the budget right now, because it's very close to what the, what the premium would have been.
We had budgeted for 22%, so it would be a wash. So it's finding that number in between the 22% and the 3.5, looking at the 9.32%. That's what we've had over the last three years, Don, combined, approximately, you've had great experience.
Yeah, we've had very good experience over the last three years. We had a couple of near zeros and a tandem.
I sat, I sat in on the meeting with Dave Matthew a few weeks ago, a couple weeks ago, and I went to the town council meeting again the other night and heard the presentation. And I obviously am not going to speak for them, but the council seemed very interested in him. If I had to guess, it's probably the way that they, they would like to go. He just emphasized that we have, that it will work if you do it properly, and it needs to be funded somewhat. You know, it definitely, we need to start funding it if that's the way that it's going to go. But he did, he did make a very good point, that, like you said, 20%, about 20, 21% is going to be the increase in our premium anyways. We could save a little bit if we don't fund it, fund it 100%, or if you want to, you know, budget that, fund it 100%. But he emphasized that it needs to be funded in some, in some percentage, it needs to be funded to do it the right way. Do you need a vote on this from us?
No, no, I mean, ultimately, I think this decision will be made by the town council because they're really, I mean, they're going to have to do a couple of things, they're going to have to set up a fund, an insurance fund, which would require a resolution on their part. And then, you know, they do ultimately, because the town owns the policy, they ultimately become the guarantor of the policy, so.
We met with the president and vice president in unions yesterday, just explained that this was being discussed, you can hear about it, it's not going to impact any, anything with their policies at all, it's just the funding mechanism and the management and the increase in, in the work on both sides of town, at Town Hall and here, with paying and making sure that everything is paid, collected, and done, and so, you know, they were on board with, with that.
Because effectively, what would happen in this case is, because it's a combined plan between the town and the board, we would, based on an allocation rate that's given to us by Anthem, we would effectively pay premiums to the town fund instead of to Anthem. And then, they then pay the claims out of that fund. So that's kind of the way that would work.
How does that impact us with budgeting now? That gets tricky, doesn't it?
Well, no, no, I mean, I think what will happen is whatever decision is made in terms of whether to do it and how much of the risk corridor to fund, that's going to have to be built into the calculations, and so, you know, that's, that's how we'll handle it. And the budget numbers, basically, as it always is, is pretty much the same for the town and the board, because we're a pool group.
When you were at the council meeting or the presentation, was there any discussion about support with setting it up and utilizing it the first year to make sure it's set up correctly, or... Dave Matthew would, yes, he, yes, he was very, very explicit on that, and that there would be a lot of direction to go in, and a lot of explanation, and he strongly suggested that the council, I don't know, it would be an ordinance, a policy, whatever, a resolution, that, like, that money, not, he said, where the towns go wrong is they set up the fund for this, and then, okay, a couple months into the year, they're, they're not paying a ton of claims, they dip into it for something, and then they dip into it again. And he strongly suggested that there be some sort of resolution or something going on that at council, that it can't be touched, it has to be reserved for that. You know, just to make sure that it's managed the way it's supposed to be managed, because it would be new for somebody at Town Hall or wherever they want to take care of rules. He said there's a lot of support at Anthem for that.
Well, the other thing, we, we, it's on a much smaller scale, but we currently self-insure dental.
Right.
So, I mean, this, you know, Anthony and I do this on a monthly basis.
This is not, the benefit is that Anthony and Don are going to be doing just a little work.
The benefits.
Let me finish my statement. And they have the working relationship where it would be a smooth transition. They're doing it for dental, this is obviously much bigger, putting the medical in, but that wouldn't be the problem, you know, but as you mentioned, it's, it's not a rainy day of fun.
Right.
It's, it's there, it sits, and it accrues, it builds over time, and that lessens the burden in good years for the next year. And that's the discipline, the agreement you have to have.
And he said there would be some realization of savings in the first year. He said, and sometimes, like, the second year, you don't see as much, and people tend to veil out of it, towns tend to veil out of it. He says, you can't jump the gun too quickly, he says, you know, it'll even out, it'll, it'll work to your advantage, even out over a few years, he said, but you have to be patient with it.
Right, no, this isn't a quick hit.
Right.
It's the opportune time to do it, because we're going into a 22% increase year.
And you save the taxes paid to the government.
Right, well, it's $200,000 right at the top for the Affordable Care, and, you know, you dodge that by self-insurance.
Right.
And that's nearly a percentage point in our budget, so it's real money, it's, it's a big savings, and it could be accrued for both sides.
Right.
Any questions on self-insurance?
No, clearly.
What can you explain?
Police, athletics.
You got it.
I also, I heard what you have at your seat is an updated capital list, and what I did is, I put... is I put some costs in it that are very soft costs in terms of their level of precision. But for example, one of the things I, I put back in, which I had not actually put in the first time, was additional funding for the high school bathroom project because the estimate we got from Naftis and Young was just about double what had been allocated, what we originally asked for and was ultimately allocated by the council. So, well, obviously we haven't spent any money yet except on Naftis and Young, but when we go back to the council, one of the things we'll have to hash out is are we going to do all the bathrooms, which means we need this extra money, or are we going to do some of the bathrooms within what was already allocated? So those are the kinds of discussions that'll have to occur between the council and the board. So, but I put this in here again because it is, if we want to do the whole job the way we've got it specked out currently, it's going to require about another $120,000 of funds. The next thing I did was in terms of the unit ventilators, I counted rooms. So again, these are not necessarily precise numbers, but there's about 70 spaces at the high school that would need a ventilator. And so I used a $7,500 number and that comes out to a little over half a million dollars. At Totucket Valley, there's about 50 spaces, so that comes out to about $375,000. And so the total, if you add these all up, and this is again, this is doing all the asbestos, some of this we frankly couldn't do all in one year, it would just be unmanageable. But, so if you look at that total of $2 million, I mean, I think what we probably are looking at is maybe developing some sort of a five-year plan and, you know, and coming up with a request.
The blinds are actually moving from the window.
We put it through windows.
So that's, that's where we'll need some direction. So between now and next Thursday, when you actually have to approve the budget, I have a sense of what do you want to do with it.
I just want to mention with the, the heating ventilators, you'll see a second number for the ability to heat and cool. So for an additional $2,500 per unit, you would get the AC unit if that's something that you want to entertain in the, in the overall cost of obviously increase.
Does that mean we can get rid of some of the window air conditioners?
With the, with the-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So technically it would be more efficient to run.
Oh, yeah. The ones in the windows are-
But we don't have that many air-conditioned spaces, so, you know, we have a lot of offices, but we don't have that many classrooms at the high school, I don't think, with window air conditioners. I'm going to be quiet apart from the audience.
There's at least a couple of them.
Former high school people, right?
Is that all?
Yeah, we don't, we, generally speaking, those have been put in in response to students with medical needs that have been left there. And they've either been left there, sometimes they've even been moved, depending on the situation. There are, I mean, the high school does have some, we have them in the cafeteria, have the combination heat, cool ventilators, a number of the computer labs.
Immediate somewhere.
Have. So, you know, there are some of the larger spaces already have them. That makes a big difference.
Absolutely.
So this price does not include the charge of 2,500 per unit?
And if we did that on a five-year or a three-year rotation, whatever the breakdown is, here's my question, by the time we get to the end, are we going to have to start over again or?
By the lifespan of one table units? No, I'm guessing, Don, they're at least 10 years.
Well, not only that, I mean, the, the ventilators we have in the high school now are, some of them I believe are original equipment. So, you know, they've, they've actually lasted fairly well. The problem is we don't have the software now to, to operate many of them. John Torio has to retrofit and rewire to get the program to, you know, turn the heating units.
And they're probably not fit, you know, they're not efficient at all.
Well, the other thing that's happening is, is they are old enough where John is having difficulty getting parts in. And so one of the things he's actually doing now is he's retrofitting some of the blowers with blowers we can get and as close as the, to the ones that were originally in there, but, you know, it takes some work on his part to, to make it work and it's not going to be as efficient because it's not what was originally designed.
So it's not efficient, we're, we're paying him time-
Oh, absolutely.
-and labor for something that is ultimately not going to last.
To do it the right way, one time, if we have the operating to do it, we're going to be to put the heat and cooling units in. Phase it over five years and start on the second floor and work early now.
And we have about seven or eight units over there that we actually are, he's getting quotes on right now because they are pretty much inoperable.
Is any of that money reimbursable from the state?
I doubt it. Typically, when these things, kinds of things, you're going to get into air exchange rates and, and all of those calculations and I'm not sure we would meet the, be able to meet the standard. I mean, that's the advantage of doing a reconstruction project and it does become eligible, but it's going to be a much bigger number than this.
I was wondering if we did that in windows, you know, if we put packages together rather than make it-
I don't know, I mean, you know, we can, we can certainly find out if there's any reimbursement, but typically repairs are no go.
There are no prices for the window replacements. You can imagine, single pane, fifty-year-old.
If you lost over right now, it would be quite chilly.
What?
So over a five-year span, it would be approximately 240,000 dollars per year?
To do the-
The year in both, to tow both schools?
To Target and the high school age to seventy plus.
You're right, you're in the numbers.
Did you do the 10,000?
Yes.
Oh, you do the 10,000, so we're talking about-
So that's 120,000.
120 times-
700,000, it brings, took it value to 500, right?
Yep.
So millions who over five years, 240, 240, right?
And I also, just as a reminder, the capital budget you put forward to the town council is a line item budget as opposed to the operating budget and the council could decide to fund some, all, or none of the items on the, on the list.
So is there any possible way on this that we could note a five-year figure, you know, that it's a plan, it would, our plan would be to break it down over five years?
Oh, yeah, we can certainly provide an explanation.
And we could do them all in one year, obviously, but, you know, a three-year plan, a five-year plan and just break it down until we were looking at, they can see it that way also, as opposed to just looking at a whole number.
Yeah.
I think years past, I was thinking around 10th budget season or something, I think in the beginning, we sort of picked and chose what we thought and just brought that forward to the council. And of recent, I think we haven't picked and chose, we've just sort of left it and sort of given our priorities, what we thought was the most important and why should we narrow it down? Let's, you know what I mean? Because they have a say, item by item here, you know?
No, I don't want to narrow it down, I just have for them to look at it and say, okay, so it's going to be a million two, we definitely can't afford that, so we're going to maybe take that out. Well, if they see that we're willing to span it over five years and this year would only cost us 240,000, maybe that's something they can work with, that's all. I'm not saying, let's say from the claim, let's show what our options are.
No, this is for the newer people. Of recent, we've, we've sort of not narrowed the list down, we've sort of just given it to them with what's highest priorities at this point.
The bathrooms are an example of that, where we had X amount of dollars and we're going to phase as many bathrooms in as we possibly can. We'll select the ones that we want to do to get to the number and then we'll, we'll get any new capital monies to continue on to complete them.
Now, the other thing ultimately with the bathrooms is we've made a decision that we're not going to do those until this summer anyway. So if we got a second round of funding, we could actually do everything all right. So we already have a pot of money that we're going to start with and do as many as we can, complete renovation, and if we get extra money, then we'll, we'll continue. And that's the same with the pneumatic routes, Tom. Well, those are already approved, so those are Kim and Bill are working on a bid for those, not trying.
Maybe, could, could we send an email to, to the council asking them, or when we submit this actually, when we submit it, I guess, asking them if they want to tour and see any of the things that are on here? Do you think we should do that? Do you think that would, who do you think will?
I'm always in favor of that. Because when you physically see something, it's harder to say, you say we need bathrooms, but to do, because you see the rust and the corrosion, we don't know how bad it is. So anything we can do to present it in a, you know, a light, I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, I, I know when we've done these walkthroughs, it's been the same few people.
Well, there's new council members that, that have them, so.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So maybe we shouldn't invite them, let, let them tell us which ones they're interested in before they make decisions on them, they might want to-
Or do they allow a slide presentation? They don't want to, you know, if they can't make it, we go and we take pictures of what we're talking about and do a slide presentation. So everybody can see what we're talking about. We're asking for XYZ for bathrooms or whatever, here's, here's a slide of what we're talking about, you know, the rust, this, that, the other thing. And show it to them in public. They don't want to come to us, we'll show them, we'll bring it to them.
I mean, do we know if students come, technical background, they can't learn, can do editing and revising? With no pay?
No money left in the budget.
We could do that.
Whatever works, I mean-
Yeah, that might be easier for them.
Well, the budget workshop with the board that is on Saturday, March 7th, so that would be a perfect time.
Right, we could do it then.
So that would be a time to do it?
That would be a perfect time to do it, to have the dialogue on your capital.
Do you think that would be easier to have a slide presentation like that?
Well, you'll have more people there, you'll get more people there because when you do the walkthroughs, you get two, maybe three people and it's the same ones and we've all saw. And we saw the pictures last year when you presented and we approved the bathrooms for last year. So, you know, you're preaching to the fire on that one because it's the same people that come to it. So I, I think it would be, it would be better to do a short presentation.
Yeah, and highlight whatever.
Yeah, to just talk about it and that, that would be perfectly fine.
So I, I mean, do it through music.
And it's still cold in March, I don't think we want to be warm, we don't know if the weather's going to break, so.
So I don't know, but I think that would be a, a good, you know, we could choose our battles and show them exactly what we're, we're talking about.
We can go through this list and stuff together.
Okay, great.
The other thing I do also want to do in it because we've got some pricing for high school bathrooms. So I'm going to try to use that to come up with an estimate for the bathrooms at Totucket Valley. Again, it won't be precise, but it should be raised more. Any other questions on the operating budget? Because at the meeting next Thursday, you will have to approve a number to be sent along to the town council.
I have a question for a piece of paper.
Yes, Jim.
Hi there. Under professional service, can you tell me what that includes? I'm on page 25.
Right. It includes occupational and physical therapy through contracted staff in both of those areas. It also includes our consultation with the American School for the Deaf. We work with an audiologist who monitors the equipment that we have in our schools. If we have students who have hearing aids, she does regular consultation and works with teachers to teach them how to use the new equipment and make sure that the equipment is in operating order and attends meetings when needed to review audiological evaluations and make recommendations for, for equipment. And the large, the largest area is in the area of behavior consultation. Last year, we've always contracted with ASIS for our behavior services and we've found that there's been a greater need for students to access behavior services. Initially, we use behavior services primarily for students in the preschool program and the life skills program to work with data collection systems and working on teaching professional development and training for both special education teachers and paraprofessionals on doing more discrete trial instruction kinds of strategies. We've really expanded the use of behavior services to look for students that have social, emotional, behavioral needs, to provide a consultation to our bridges programs and using them to support students in developing greater social skills or generalizing their skills across the higher levels. So initially, we were contracting on just an hourly basis and then we went to one day a week of behavior services. Last year, one of the things that I recommended in the budget was to increase to two days a week of services. We weren't able to maintain that in the budget. So I increased it, I made some changes in my budget and cut back on some instructional supplies because behavior services has been the area of greatest request from building principals for supports in their schools. And so I wanted to reflect that in the budget for next year. And so this reflects a one and a half days, I'm trying to manage one and a half to two days through my own budget and I have to say we're cutting it very close at this point and having to really put the brakes on some other things in order to make that a priority. But it continues to be a priority in the district in terms of helping students to be successful, staying in our school so we don't have to have students go to out-of-district placements and really expanding the use of those behavior services to a greater population of students.
And the ancillary OT VT, the number that you use is what you are currently aware of on the ceiling that you'll need.
Correct.
You could actually inherit a student with needs that supersede the figure that we had here at any given point in time, correct? If you, if you had a student who went to the district that you needed as a service, that figure-
It could change somewhat and sometimes we have to look at our services and determine whether students could be seen in a small group rather than one-to-one. Typically, our OT and PT services at the younger levels, we provide those services one-to-one. When we look at the students who are getting more independent living kind of skills, for example, in the intermediate and high school in the life skills program, it's done more as a group and we're doing more consultation with teachers and paraprofessionals to carry out those skills once the OT or PT determine what the program should look like. They teach the staff and then the staff make sure that they implement that program consistently each day.
Thank you very much.
Page 30, account number 2210, it's an increase of approximately $120,000 over this year's budget?
Yes, that's where the two instructional coaches are, the math coach and the line jarts coach. So that's-
Their new positions, obviously the increase represents that, there was no, there were no people in positions.
The three increases were those two in the library and drill parcs.
Okay, and on the same page, account number 2220, it's an increase of about $48,000.
That's the library.
That's the library, okay.
We removed that position two years ago and with the changes.
And on page 32, the total regular program, $66,000 increase, it's in the NDIS certified
Well, that's not, that's actually just, that would be teacher's contract for, for whatever reason. Because that's, those are the actual numbers that I came up with for this year.
Our contract?
Yeah. That does not reflect an increase in staffing.
Okay.
And NBIS like just happens to be a little bit higher than some of the other buildings.
Yeah. All right, that's all I have for right now.
Anybody else have anything? Thank you.
Yep.
Any more on? We got comments coming to the agenda. What do you got?
Yes.
Rose.
Do I have to stand or can I just sit?
Whatever you have.
Okay, all right. First, on your capital budget, would you break down the asbestos the same way you are the unit ventilators? Because that's an awful lot and I don't know that you can do all of that in one year.
Oh, no, we couldn't.
Oh, okay. So that would be all that three to five year?
Yeah, it would be impractical to try to do that all in one year.
Okay. The other thing that you need to add into your capital is the track because there's extra funding that, based on the quotes that you got this year, you don't have enough money to do the track because you only had $65,000. And I think your quotes...
Will you help me with that?
Right, that's already approved.
Yeah, the 65 we responded, but it came out in about...
But it came in at like 90 or something.
Right, okay, okay.
So.
And that's something we can't do three quarters of the track. It doesn't work down.
Or you can do just some of the lanes, maybe.
We haven't done anything with the track since we installed it, correct?
Yes, you have.
Did we resurface it once?
We resurfaced it once, but we did not do repairs. And that's the difference between what we had originally asked for and this number is the repair as opposed to just resurfacing.
No, that was in Bob's system here, wasn't it? When you were on hiatus, I think it was Chris Scott, wasn't it?
I think it was like in '08 or something. When we looked at the last time it was done, it was '07 or '08.
It's down to...
And it was resurfacing.
Right, there it is. You can see the red or the color that the track is, is down to, or it's dark and it's gone.
So additional money is... So how much do we need additional, 35?
I'll check. I got it.
The other thing, since we're talking capital, is the TBS roof project, which is moving forward and getting done this summer. And at the last permanent project building committee talk, they talked about the air conditioning units because they are almost at the end of their life. The administrative, there's only three units, administrative, library, cafeteria. The architect and there was an engineer there today and I think a roofer, they looked at the models of the air conditioning units. One unit is 17 years, one is 19 years, and one is 25 years. So they are...
They're stuck.
So, yeah. So they're putting together some rough numbers as far as what it would cost to replace those units because now is the time to do that when you're doing the roof. So that in a year or two, you're not back up there on a brand-new roof replacing these units. And they were also very happy with what we did at the high school in replacing all of those ventilators up on the roof at the time that it was done.
Okay.
They were, you know, they said, and TBS by no means has as many as the high school. They have much less. And that's probably the same track that we're going to go to and have it outside of the contract because it's not reimbursable anyway by the state. And keeping it out of the contract, you don't have to pay the general contractor at least 20% upcharge on any of these.
Was there some discussion about the town purchasing them and something that they did in the high school? Which that wasn't part of that initial project.
Right, that's, those are the ventilator. There was, I think somewhere around 28, 30 of them. And we ended up spending about $40,000. That, you know, they're on state contract. They were able to purchase them. We wrote it into the contract of the roofing, of the roofing company, that they had to take the old ones off and set the new ones in place. And then John Florio hooked them up. And the whole idea of that is to prevent less contractors up on the roof and less finger pointing later on if there's any problems. And they said that was absolutely the way to go on that. But I think there needs to be a discussion between the Board of Ed and the council in regards to those air conditioning units. Their ballpark figure for the administrative wing in the library was probably somewhere around $140,000, $150,000.
Total or per?
Total.
Total, $150,000.
And then the cafeteria, they didn't have a number because, you know, I asked them about that one just to get a number on it because there have been a number of issues with that one. And that one is the oldest at 25 years. So I think we need to have a discussion on that. So if you can try and get a little bit more numbers, and they're just estimates, but I think now is the time to have that discussion in regards to those units. The other thing is for the next, for your budget meeting next week or part of your board meeting, I know you've talked about the insurance, how there's approximately 50 employees that opt out of it and the savings that that is. Can you get the numbers as to how many people come back in per year or have come back in in the last four years?
Yeah, I think we can probably... Getting back to the TBS roof project, I spoke with Tom Hiver today. He will be at the meeting next Thursday to roll the specs. And he'll present and talk to you about that. And that just...
At our...
At our meeting. So we'll have him know tomorrow, let him know. I spoke with him by phone a few years Thursday. So he'll want to put them on early in the agenda.
Because the meeting with the state, we were able to get it moved up five weeks. So the meeting is now February 17th for them to go over everything with the state.
Oh, that's great. So it's all...
Well, there was just too short of a window and it was, and the project has to get done this summer. I mean, there's, you don't have any other option really on the project. And it was...
Buy oats?
Huh?
You can buy oats?
We could, we could.
I need to tell the unit to tell her that we have budget workshop next Monday, which is the building committee.
That's at their school.
Yeah, at their school. I did reply as soon as she sent it to let her know that Board of Ed won't be in attendance because we have...
There's no budget workshop?
No, we have something.
You're Thursday.
There's communications at 6 o'clock, but then Bill leaves at 7.
Yeah, there was some conflict in my calendar. I was ahead of my calendar incorrectly. I could have had it in, I'll relook it. And if I make a mistake, I'll send her another email. Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't think you had a budget.
Yeah, I'm just on my calendar incorrectly.
The only thing I know of next week is communications on Monday at 6 and the board meeting on Thursday.
I'll check it. I'll check it if I have to.
Okay.
And I don't think we're in a communication.
No, because we got the note down.
Should I be having a meeting that night?
Yes, yes, there's no, there's no meeting.
Any other thoughts?
None, those are all mine.
Anybody else? I just want to remind everybody that Rose, thank you for Saturday, March 7th. We are...
It's 11 o'clock.
11 o'clock, we mark our calendars. We'll be in front of the town council on Saturday, March 7th at 11 a.m.
And the budget presentation is on Tuesday, March 3rd. They just finalized the budget today and getting all of those budget dates.
So Tuesday, March 3rd, 7, Rose?
Yes.
Thank you.
Rose, will you do that meeting at Town Hall or is that going to be switched over to NBIS?
It has been at Town Hall, but the budget presentation.
Okay.
And the budget workshops on Saturday morning are at Town Hall.
Okay.
Anything else from anybody?
No, thank you.
All right. All in favor? You know, I just wanted to wait.
I just have one question.
Please stand.
Been asking. Okay, that's Charlie Ramsey. Charlie Ramsey, president of the Paraprofessionals Union. But here is a, here is a problem. A lot of people are wondering what's going to happen, and you may not have an answer for this, if we get more snow days after we pass the February break. It's like the biggest question here. There's people in town and state. So as I said, I don't necessarily expect the answer tonight, but it's been asked a lot.
All right.
We've got tonight.
Please cover that on the calendar. We do have that information on the calendar. And it's similar to last year. After going over three days, we would take from the February break. Unless something happens this evening, we will have a full week for February vacation starting next week. April vacation will not be touched. We'll be adding days on to the end of the year with the traditional snow day up until June 30th. We cannot go past June 30th by statute.
Thank you, sir.
So we do go 182 school days. We have had no discussions about looking at those two potential days or P E days at this time. We're currently at June 19th, a Friday for graduation.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. You're welcome. Any other comments from the... Okay. Approval of the previous minutes. I'll still remember sorry, dear.
I would like to speak upon my partner Bryce Mason. He wanted to apologize for not being there because of states for a fact.
That's a good reason to miss it.
Exactly. As the weeks have gone on, the sophomores are continuing to prepare for the upcoming science cap testing, which is scheduled for March 25th. Not only that, but ASAP testing for all 11th grade students is scheduled during the end of April and the onset of May. They are taking into account the College Board National Testing Days for Advanced Placement as the juniors are enrolled in. So they have to make sure the schedule accommodates it. During this time of preparation, school administration has completed mid-year conferences for over 60 certified staff members as required by the North Branch Republic Schools Teacher Evaluation Program in alignment with the C S D E requirements for teacher evaluation. The certified staff is provided detailed updates on the student learning objectives, which included the data through the decision-making reports for pre- and post-assessments. Moving on to some sports. The head girls basketball coach, Chris Webster, was recognized during the faculty meeting and during the home game because she surpassed 500 wins during her coaching career. Mr. Kevorkian presented Coach Webster with a plaque recognizing such an achievement in which her teammates and faculty were provided congratulatory T-shirts to celebrate. Another highlight in the sports is the success of the NBHS winter sports. The boys hockey team and the girls basketball team are qualified for the CIAC state tournaments after regular season. Currently, the boys' basketball is 4-6, the girls' basketball 9-4, girls' hockey 8-2, and boys' hockey 11-3. Lastly, Mr. James McDonald, the interim assistant principal at NBHS, was recognized during the February faculty meeting, but the NBHS faculty and staff appreciated his efforts. During this time, Mr. McDonald will be returning to retire following February vacation, and Mr. Greg Watts will be coming up as the new assistant principal.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to comment on Coach Webster's 500 win. I believe she's the first female coach in the state to achieve that milestone of 500 wins in over 38 years of coaching. So it's an incredible honor. And we want to congratulate Coach Webster for her efforts. Both teams have qualified for the state tournament or will be qualifying, I shouldn't jinx them. The girls have already, they've surpassed the minimum of eight wins. And the boys are 157 wins. And our fingers are crossed. They're both having great seasons, as are the other sports teams. The hockey team is doing phenomenal. The door track is a great turnaround. It's been quite well, so congratulations to all of them. Thank you. Do you want to go home and study? You can stay hang with us, it's all right. This is your opportunity.
Should I?
No, don't want to.
How are you, Mike? All right, approval of previous minutes.
I'm going to move to approve the minutes of the January 15th, 2015 for the education meeting as submitted.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary York?
Yes.
Philip Dalmyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Bumbek?
Yes.
All right, January 22nd, 2015 budget workshop minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 22nd, 2015 budget workshop as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary York?
Yes.
Philip Dalmyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes, I'm sorry. I think we need to redo the previous motion.
I think so, too.
Good catch, Debbie. Because Phil, you can't second that motion because you weren't here for that meeting.
What, January 22nd?
No, the Board of Ed meeting is here for... Oh, the budget workshop, the first budget workshop, you wasn't here.
No, I... You weren't here for the meeting?
The Board of Ed meeting.
No, I seconded the, uh...
Oh, you're right. You seconded the Board of Ed meeting.
Seconded the minutes, yeah.
Yeah, he did do the board workshop. Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay.
You're fine. Can you second?
Diane Bumbek?
Thank you.
I knew I was sitting by myself at the table. I was unsure which one.
We're good.
We're good.
Okay.
Well, before you move on, could I make a motion to move the building committee, the discussion about the roof and the specs for Totucket Valley, to move it up on the agenda? Can I make a motion to do that?
Yeah, you can.
Sure, I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary York?
Yes.
Philip Dalmyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Bumbek?
Yes.
Okay, well, bye.
Why isn't February 5th budget workshop? Didn't have to be approved?
Because that was just the other day.
All right.
That was just last Thursday.
All right. Just ask.
Because the board agenda went out on Friday, so it was a little tight.
Sure, okay.
Okay, Florence here as well. Thank you for accommodating the gentleman here tonight. Carmela Rosas here from Fibrigosa. And as we discussed earlier, you have at your possession the specs for the TBS roof project. I know we've had numerous questions regarding flat roof pitchery, what it would look like, timeline. So this is the time to ask those questions. And I want to thank you for being here tonight. I was smelling cold in my house.
Thank you, appreciate it. Again, my name is Carmela Rosas, Fibrigosa Architects.
We're here to kind of give you an update on the scope of work for the Totucket Valley Elementary School re-roofing. The base bid for the project is to remove the 62,000 square feet of flat roof down to a roof deck and replace it with a two ply modified vitam roof system similar to what we did at the high school last year. There's two add alternates with the base bid. Add alternate number one... Add alternate number one is to provide, again, the two ply vitam roof system throughout most of the school and have a metal roof system on the gymnasium and library. Add alternate number two would be to have a metal roof system on the gymnasium and library as well as the front wing. We've shown a couple of different colors. There's a whole palette of different metal roof colors that you can choose from. We show you a green and a red here. Again, we'll be removing the existing roof system down to the decks. We have a few different types of decks here. Metal deck, concrete deck, and a techton deck. There's details throughout the construction documents as well as the specs that talk about the different systems. Core cuts have been done throughout the roof system that are presently being tested right now for PCBs and asbestos. I'm sorry. Also in the base bid is to provide a roof coating on the outside front canopy. It's a liquid urethane rubber membrane waterproofing.
Is that similar to what we did at the high school?
Yes.
Second.
Yeah. We're going to be installing new overflow roof drains throughout approximately 98 with the associated drain piping above ceilings. There's minimal mechanical work done in the base bid. There's some electric, the satellite dish will be removed, some temporary electrical disconnects and reconnects in the base bid. In alternate one and alternate, add alternate two, there will be some mechanical units that need to be relocated. This mechanical unit here above the library will be moved back to this location, and this mechanical unit here will be moved back into this location. In the add alternate number two, we create a flat roof spot so that we can't have that. We can't have the unit relocated. That's pretty much the scope of work. We do have some form work that needs to be filled out tonight for the state. There is the indoor air quality certification that needs to be filled out by Mr. Shoemaker, and we also have to fill out the requests for review of the final plans that needs to be signed by Mr. Shoemaker and chairperson, Mr. Patenoster. So, I will kind of send those people to block for your signature and then answer some questions if I have any.
Any bad questions, or...
Can you just explain that space on add alternate two? The space that's just to the bottom of what would be that library space? So, that small area between the fixed areas would be flat? Right, where you're moving it, right here?
That will flat.
Okay.
Naturally, the mechanical system will be moved to it.
Okay.
Can I make a motion to approve the 2015 educational specification for the T V S roof replacement project, number T M P 099 D B Z N as submitted?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Orwork?
Yes.
Philip Dalmyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane von Bech?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Just before we do...
Make a motion to approve the construction documents for the T V S roof replacement project, number T M P 099 D B Z N as presented.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Orwork?
Yes.
Philip Dalmyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane von Bech?
Thank you. Quick comment. If we are able to and it's feasible to do the second object in pitch for greater capacity of the rooftop, that would be my recommendation based on past history with other projects that we've, not only not here in North Branford, but in my previous years with flat roofs and the potential for problems. This is the way to go. My question is, if we do expand and do a greater capacity of the roof with a pitch, getting the roof done during the summer months, I understand, is going to be a challenge when we go over into the start of the school year. Any projection of a timeline, how long that would be, to complete with a pitch if we do the larger area?
I guess that's my answer.
Well...
This is a consultant.
Yeah. The one thing is, it depends on the contractor, okay? And weather. More than likely, I'm going to tell you right now, it would not be completed because there's a lot of work to do. You still have to do the demolition. You still have to install a temporary roof, okay? To keep your water tight. And then they install the framing system, and then they start putting in the metal panels. So, what we try to do is at least get the demolition done and the temporary roof on and get the framing going before the kids get in. And then, again, really, bottom line, it does depend on the contractors. If you have a contractor who is a large contractor and has the base to get it done, you can get it done. If it's a smaller contractor, you tend to run some smaller crews, so it will take longer.
Obviously, student-staff safety.
Yes. Yeah, well, you know, when...
When in the building while it's going on, we had talked about starting in the spring, getting ahead of it, even with working after school hours to get up on the roof and start to do some of that demolition and doing some of those prerequisites.
That also obviously depends on the results, what we get back from testing.
Core testing.
Yeah. If it's clean, you can start whenever you want.
I do want to acknowledge, and it's not a kind of pitch for the company that worked with us at the high school. We were ahead of schedule with that project, and they worked diligently to make sure, with all precautions, they were wanting to put it well. If we get into a situation where we can work efficiently with the group knowing that this is going to take a little more time, it will be worth it.
Well, we were told at the building committee meeting was that by the way, I'm sorry, is that they would be able to get the flat roof on and the frame for the pitch prior to school starting, and he assured us that the, whatever that mail...
The panels.
Panels are called exactly, the terminals are. Go on relatively quietly, and that could occur after the kids get back, were back in school with little, if at all, any disruption.
Right.
And that was acceptable. I mean, as long as the pitches are done prior to school starting. That was acceptable from the building.
We were involved in the project up at Region 13 a few years ago in the similar situation at Memorial School. And that particular contractor ended up finishing the installation of the panels, and when the kids got back, they were just working on detail work, which is, that's the... Fingers crossed.
Okay.
Okay. Dr. Loos, any questions? I know the color, see, that orange is out. What is it?
No, I just, I'm very excited to get rid of all of our buckets in the hallway.
They're here to that.
Right, gentlemen, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Can we move on to personnel process? Does it look like there's anything there?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We move on to the superintendent's report. Kindergarten enrollment, I'm sorry. I'm backtracking. Board briefs are attached. If there's any questions at this time, you must show yourself here. If not, we'll move along. I know that there's a number of fundraisers. The one, the St. Baldry's fundraiser was moved through the snow. Cancelation on 2/23rd, I believe, that Sunday night in the evening. Any other questions?
I have to say, we have some really good sports in our school system. There was a particular teacher over at Totucket Valley that I heard was a very good sport about having been slimed with hot fudge and whatever else was poured all over this poor teacher. Turned carpenter. And they raised quite good money.
We did, yes.
Well, because I believe there's other people getting their head shaved, right? Well, that's for St. Baldry's. But this was different. They slimed him, and they poured, like, what'd they pour? Hot fudge on him and whipped cream, cherries, sprinkles. He had a nice tarp underneath him though, so the gym floor was very tight. Well, I'm sure the leagues wouldn't watch him right off.
And I know, it hasn't really been a competition, but many of the schools have embraced the fundraiser. I know at the high school, Sam Bowie is going to participate, and she's been fundraising, and the little tags are all over the wall. And I heard that Dr. Welch is also participating. Is that true?
True.
Okay.
Which fundraiser is that? The St. Baldry's?
The St. Baldry's.
The highest team gets to shave their head, correct? So, you're not even dealing with professionals at that point.
This is some lucky element.
I would take advantage. So, thank you to all the schools who participate. Okay. Moving along, we're looking to finalize our 15, 16 budget request. We've had a couple of meetings and discussions, and if there's any questions that were since our last meeting to if we can ask at this time. If not, we're looking to determine another move forward.
Well, basically, we're basically looking at a maintenance budget is what we're looking at for the most part. There's really nothing new.
Well, there are three new positions included.
A librarian?
The school librarian at Jerome Harrison is actually also a trade-off because we would eliminate another position. And then two, the math and language arts coaches.
Those were the two.
So, those are the new initiatives that are included.
But that's it. Everything else is...
It's done as well.
What was the number we ended up with? Any changes we made or anything else?
We didn't make any changes. Sorry, that's, I mean, the nodes are here.
Now, we have obviously been reading on the insurance and the potential for changing our funding mechanism, which would have an impact, obviously, savings moving forward. But we have not nailed down with the town council where that will go and what it would look like.
And that's, I mean, that's actually very typical. It's rare that when we present the budget to the town council that there aren't adjustments to the healthcare after that because the first number we get from Anthem tends to be a little high. This may be different this year because of the potential of self-insurance. But then even there, the decision has to be made how much of that risk card or something. So, this is still, you know, from that perspective, a limited document. And that is a significant amount of this requested increase.
Doctor, may I apologize if this was brought up at the budget workshop that I missed, but the special education grant, I think last year we had, the town council had instructed us to include it?
Yeah, this year we did not include it. I'm just, I'm going to give them a number for what I anticipate it will be.
Okay.
But it's not included.
Okay.
And for our girls to play hockey, that is included?
Yes, it is.
Minimal, but it's included, right?
Right. We included six players at $1,250.
So, go back and get this, I agree. If it increases, we're committing $7,500, but you get seven, seven or eight girls. Are we just committed to $7,500, or will we do eight times the $1,250?
Well, we could come back and have that discussion at that time. If Branford says to us we can only accept four players this year, then it would be less, and then, you know, the money, you know, the budget for would be used, and we would be charging for it.
It's just a minimal. Because I don't mean this the way it's going to come out because we're Branford's mercy. Whatever slots they can give us.
Well, we're playing under cooperative teams at Branford High School.
Right. So, whatever slots they have available for us is what we get the opportunity for.
Couldn't we fund that in a different way and say, I know we could obviously talk about this, it's only $7,000, but say, we're going to fund it $6,000. If there's six girls, they each get $1,000. If there's three girls, they get, like...
That could be your vote. Sure. Yeah, that could be your vote. I don't agree with that. That could be your vote. No, that's fine. And you could vote to the $7,500. This way, the board... Or the total.
Okay.
No, first, what you said, sorry.
We commit X amount of dollars to the girls' hockey team. It's like we commit X amount of dollars to every other. And I know that part of that is paid out with the girls' pocket. I completely understand that. But this way, it doesn't fluctuate, and it depends on the number of girls. So, we're not coming back and saying, well, this year we had eight girls. Now, what are we going to do? And it would be so minimal.
Are you ready, Allison, to turn blue?
I'd like to approve an operating budget request of $31,496,142 for the school year 2015, 2016. I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Philip Dalmyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane von Bech?
Okay. We also have a list of possible capital expenditures that were included in your packet. Those capital projects were estimates by Mr. Winnicky, looking at various projects that we've had discussions over the last several months. So, if there are any questions about any of those projects, now would be the time. If not, we were looking at a total of $2,602,000.
Well, no, that's the five-year. I don't know.
I was just like, we're running out.
Let's spend the $2 million tonight while we can. If we get a road here to this one, then we want it.
Do you want the five-year?
No, I just missed the 15, 16.
Just 15, 16.
I wrote this out for the purpose of sort of a demonstration, but I think we would only do the 15, 16. And there was some discussion at the budget subcommittee regarding the facility study, which apparently we don't need. But we are going to need some additional money for the third air conditioner at Totucket Valley. So, we're probably in the right range anyway. And well, again, these numbers will get refined as we go through the process. And it's also important to recall on the capital side that the town council does have line item on this, so they can approve one of them or all of them, or none of them.
Doctor, so is it your recommendation to keep the facility study on here?
Well, I would keep the amount the same, and I'll just move the facility study down into the air conditioning line for Totucket Valley before we submit it to the town council.
So, it's the $1,025,000?
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve a capital budget request of $1,025,781 for the school year 2015, 16.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Well, I don't want to, like, make it look irresponsible that we're asking for all of that money. But I think we should definitely ask for that because they have line item veto, and they can pick and choose. I mean, I'd hate to limit ourselves and lower the amount and have them, you know, say, well, we would have given you that project.
Well, there's also, again, you know, the opportunity for dialogue and discussion with the town councils as this moves forward, so...
Right, because we had a Saturday meeting with them and whatnot, so, yes.
All right. Roll call.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Orwork?
Yes.
Philip Dalmyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane von Bech?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Kindergarten enrollment. Thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you for trying to figure this out.
Very close, man. He was doing wrong, that's it. Kindergarten enrollment registration was held on Wednesday, February 4th at Jerome Harrison, and we had 47 students register and 47 who have applications pending. Dr. Welch, that number is average?
No, we're at 96 total, so at the time it is, we have half of those people, the other half did register.
Okay.
So we have a total of 96, which is on par, I think, with the past. Last year was a little bit higher, the previous two years before that was lower. So we're right in ballpark. There's, I think, three names, additional names that are pending that we know of, and other than that, I'm sure there'll be some more over the summer that typically are.
Can you have, I don't need to put you on a time here, don't try to explain, I'm just curious, do you have any information based on the beginning of this year or up to date this year on new students who have entered after the registration process?
After registration.
And I don't need an answer tonight, but I mean, if that's an additional five kids, eight...
About seven, I actually think off the top of my head, for kindergarten.
About seven, after the initial registration process.
Do you have...
Oh, are you saying after the registration or after the year started? I'm sorry.
After the year started.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, new to the district at any point in time. That's a large number.
Those 47 applications that are pending?
No, those joined up, so they did, they registered. So now we just have to re-pending.
Okay. And that number was just coincidental, right?
So basically, we'll end up, if we have another seven, we'd be higher overall this year. If we run true to this year's history?
Yes.
Our number would actually be higher, correct?
It did.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood. I understand, all right.
Any questions?
No, I mean, I happened to be in school that night for basketball, and I thought it was very well organized. I mean, I saw parents, and they were talking, you know, you were very well organized, it was flying all the way, and it was, you know, everybody that left seemed very happy, you know, there was no chaos, it was, did a nice job.
Yeah, it is a pretty well organized team.
It really was.
Looked unhappy, said if I get off the kindergarten.
The morning session tends to be very popular, and the evening session tends to be very popular, the one during the day, it's not as many people come.
When do springings come start?
They make appointments for May, I think, May 13th, 14th, 15th, around there. So everyone who registered got an appointment.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, free service, we need the ability to sign off on the reimbursement at EB-099, State Department, Bureau of Health and Nutrition, Family Services, and Adult Education, so that we can apply for our reimbursement money. I obviously would be on the head of that as we're done with Winnicky, so, that being said, if you are in agreement, we need a motion to add our names.
I make a motion to designate staff coordinators who represent schools, and Don Winnicky, Director of Personnel and Business, sorry, Don, as the authorized signers for the State Department of Education Child Nutrition Program.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Bumbek?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item, the Summer Camp Program 2015. The theme will be Ocean Commotion. After months' discussion and teamwork, they came up with a very creative title, guaranteed to provide weeks and months of fun. This year, due to the construction at Totucket, we will relocate the camp to Jerome Harrison. We felt that this was the best facility, it's air-conditioned, they have the playground, the large field in front, so we think this would be a seamless move. And I think we say that with the confidence of our directors, Ms. Lauren Berry and Ms. Mary Savino, who will be back working the camp, co-directing the camp, with many of our certified teachers who are here on staff. It's interesting, because as much as I'd like to think that I have a lot to do with the camp, I really don't. They run the camp, and they just get you walking around and enjoy the smiles from the kids, but a lot of our students and graduates email me directly asking for an opportunity to work this camp, and if you were to read these letters from the students who are campers or who have siblings that are staff members there, and what the camp means to them, and I say it every year when I meet with the staff before the camp starts, it really becomes a family. These kids stay in contact with each other through their college years, and then they come back as professionals, as teachers, that work this camp, and they absolutely love it, and that falls into the environment that the kids are surrounded with. So I'm thrilled, I think it's great that we're going to have the camp over at Jerome, and that we have our co-directors back, so if there's any questions, Ms. Berry is present tonight, she won't give out too much information on Ocean Commotion, that's...
Topsi Kristo?
It's televised, and you'd have to be surprised.
Sounds like fun.
Okay. More good news, the Ed Foundation Shining Star, we have an all-star lineup for recipients this year. John Florio, Ron Anofio, and Bob Ward are recipients this year, so it's an honor to really acknowledge what these three have done and the service they've given to North Ramford over the many years as public servants, as coaches, as mentors. So that's March 12th, it's a fun-filled night, and I think Mrs. Anofio will be selling tickets.
I have tickets.
You want tickets, Marsha?
I do.
It really is a great evening, and remember, as it is, we have some special guests who will be introducing some of our recipients, I don't want to let that be a surprise to them. One of them was foolish enough to ask me. It's been, it's been a great event in years past, and this, I think, will follow suit with a great evening. So if you are there on 12th, it's a fun night, it's at Earl Woodman's, and it's a time, well, we're the times to, well, advance.
Putting a wire into a lineup, but it's a good fundraiser, because the Ed Foundation really don't ever wipe or spoil the stretch.
And all buildings have benefited from the many grants, and they've donated thousands of dollars, so we had a meeting this morning, and already new applicants are putting in, and as you recall, the band uniforms at the high school were a large donation this past year, and they've got a couple of very successful fundraisers, and looking to put money back into the schools to, you know, offset some of the costs of these programs and opportunities for kids, so, that being said, that's the forward for my report. All right, move on, new reports.
Yeah, I just moved that to the other side.
All right, so budget operations?
We reviewed the current budget, and there's nothing of any real consequence there, and we also had the discussion about the capital that you've already acted on, so I think that pretty much covers it.
Okay, curriculum instruction, strategic planning?
Exhibit D is the calendar that was sent out by the State Department of Education on assessment, so during the month of March, we will give science testing to students, both CAPT and CMT. Seminary VAS testing will happen during the latter part of April into May, and that is in line with what the state expectations are. We also had a very lively conversation about the new social studies frameworks that were adopted, fully adopted in February, they were initially adopted in December, and we had Mrs. Carrie Savetta from TBS and Mrs. Marcy Ardine from NVIS, the K5 and 612 Social Studies Department Chairs respectively, present to the subcommittee on what this change in the frameworks will entail in both content and instruction. They're very passionate, they really put a lot of effort and time into this, and they're very excited about it. I even asked the question about the seasons to teachers, and then how, you know, sometimes they don't like to move to new territory, and she said they're very excited about it, they're very enthusiastic, so... I'd like to thank, again, thank them for presenting, as well as commend Mrs. Carrie Savetta for being an author, a named author, blocking on these frameworks.
Thank you, Chrissy. Pension?
Here, we have a pension meeting on...
Yesterday?
Yesterday.
On Thursday.
Tuesday, Wednesday, and so far, the pension is doing well this year. We didn't make any changes to the allocations for investments, so things are going along well.
Great, thank you. Policy no meeting, ACES?
We have an ACES meeting this afternoon.
Oh, it's set up on a long day for you.
Working on, I'm working overtime. We worked on the budget, and last month, we, I gave down a copy of the state schedule, the state mandated schedule, and other than that, it doesn't look as though there's going to be any increase in fees this year.
The flat, you said, the notification, which is encouraging. All right, thanks, Al, it was a great one. Building committee?
Was canceled due to weather, are you scheduled for next week?
Communicational meeting?
Same thing, canceled due to weather. We did reschedule that, though.
They do have a date.
For communication?
It was going to be, the rescheduled communication was Monday rolls?
They haven't picked a date yet, but it might be either March 2nd or March 9th.
Or 9th, okay, so as soon as we get that, I'll put that out. Okay, new business?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session as per section 1-225 of the Connecticut General Statute, as permitted by section 1-200, 6A of the Connecticut General Statute, to discuss Agenda Item 9.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Roll call.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Bumbek?
Back to second, we got everything. Move on to the committee board, anybody have?
Oh, we're married.
All right, anything for the committee board? Okay, visitors are pressed?
Come on, all that, we're going to do it all over?
Yeah, we have to now.
The next regular board meeting is scheduled for Thursday, March 19th.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session as per section 1-225 of the Connecticut General Statute, as permitted by section 1-200, 6A of the Connecticut General Statute, to discuss Agenda Item 9.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Roll call.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Bumbek?
Yes.
Organizing of women between the North Ramford Board of Education and Local 1303-220 of Council Number Four, AFSCE, nurses effective July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, do we have to make a motion to come back out of executive?
That's what I was thinking. No, we, I asked that one other time, too. We don't have to.
Okay.
I just usually note that you came out at...
Perfect, okay, perfect.
Any discussion? Is there a rule set, do you have it?
Yes.
Roll call.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Bumbek?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. I'll second it. Thank you. What is that, our meeting with the town council, I was reminded, was it March?
Saturday.
March 7th. 7th, okay, March 7th.
Isn't there one, March 3rd is 7th, or am I...
There is, I think we have, I think we are presenting our budget.